Okay, I'd like to welcome everybody to East Dundee's regular board meeting dated Monday, December 19th, 2022 at 6 o'clock. Catherine, will you take the role?
Trustee Saviano.
Here.
Trustee Tridur.
Here.
Trustee Sauter.
Here.
Trustee Mahoney. Trustee Coonsy.
Present.
Trustee Britton.
Here.
And President Linna.
Here.
And we'll rise and complete the plate.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
Thank you. That'll take us to our public comment. If there's anybody in the audience who would like to address the board on an agenda or a non-agenda item, now is the time. Anybody who would like to say none? Okay, then we'll move on. We go to our consent agenda. We could have a motion.
I will move to approval resolution authorizing the village administrator to enter into an agreement with Hitchcock Design Group to develop a riverfront master plan for the village of East Dundee in the amount of $62,400. And also, I move to approve an ordinance appointing Franco Battolizio as deputy village clerk for the village of East Dundee, Illinois.
Second.
Does anybody have any questions or comments on these items? No? Okay. Catherine.
Trustee Saviano.
Yes.
Trustee Tridur.
Yes.
Trustee Sauter.
Yes.
Trustee Coonsy.
Yes.
Trustee Britton.
Yes.
And do I call him, Trustee Mahoney?
Uh, we have to call her in first.
She hasn't been called in.
She hasn't been called in.
Okay.
Okay.
So we'll call Trustee Mahoney arrives at 6:02.
Here.
All right. That'll take us to our meat of the meeting. The other agenda items. We'll start out with item A. Make sense if I could have a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve an ordinance granting variations from section 157 dot 147B two, 157 dot 149B, and 157 dot 140D requiring off-street parking, paving, and required lighting illumination located at 590 Healy Road, East Dundee, Illinois, 60118, PEN 01 dash 30 dash 300 dash 009 dash 0000, located in the M1 manufacturing district.
Second.
Do you like to run with this one?
Sure. So...
Understanding what they're doing.
As you will recall, the applicant came forward requesting two special uses for this property and two variances. The special use was heard at our last meeting on December 5th, I believe. The two variances were tabled to tonight's meeting to give the applicant an opportunity to attend and speak to them. As I understand, they have some additional information they'd like to provide, so if they are here, please come forward.
Great.
Hello. Good evening. I'm Jeff Moyer, representing the developer, and I brought along Steve Kaminski with Mackey Consultants. He's kind of been helping us out with the effort. So yeah, we're here to kind of address any questions the board has with regards to the development. And we did bring some information as well to kind of share with regards specifically to the, to the lighting on the site as well. So if we can, I think we've got some exhibits that we can pass out to you folks to kind of take a look at here.
Thank you.
For everybody?
Oh, thank you.
Well, Steve's passing that out too. If I can just kind of comment too, I apologize that I wasn't able to attend the last meeting. Just really wasn't aware that the item was going to be up on the, at, for discussion at the meeting. I did get an opportunity to kind of review the, the video from the, from the conversation that, that you all folks had. So, you know, I know that's not specifically on tonight's agenda, but if there's any other questions as it relates to the site or the property or, or the development, I'm certainly here to answer those questions for your folks as well.
Just for the sake of keeping things easy for us to understand, because this is sort of complex, let's just focus on the lighting first.
Fair enough.
And talk about that, and then we'll talk about the other stuff.
Okay.
So if you just want to give us a...
Sure.
Give us an idea of what you're proposing.
Thanks, Jeff. As Jeff mentioned, I'm Steve Kaminski with Mackey Consultants. I'm the civil engineer, working with the applicant. And one of the, I think, the feedback that we got from staff after the, the reception we received at the zoning hearing was that the, the request for a variation from lighting was a little too vague. It was a request that was too broad, and they asked us to kind of sharpen our pencils and look, look at, look at the plan and develop a more specific request that would be tailored to the, to the site, the circumstances in, in the area that would be more, that you'd be more able to evaluate and see why we're requesting it. And so what you have before you today is a, is a copy of the overall site plan. And in the truck parking area north of Heinz Road, you'll see there are several areas that are illustrated in a circle. It's our understanding that for uses of this site, of this type, normally the, the ordinance requires about a one-foot candle level of illumination across the, the area for the low-intensity commercial use. What's different about this site is, this is a, this will be a really controlled access site. It's not something that's open and available to the general public. It will be, it will be gated and access controlled. And we're right next to the forest preserve district, as well as fairly close to Barrington as well, which is somewhat sensitive to excessive lighting. And so what we really felt when we were looking at this, based on the, the needs and the, and the, the safety level of the particular use, being the trucking operation, that it would meet the intent of the ordinance to provide that one-foot of candle, one-foot candle of illumination in specific areas. And those are either significant intersections where there might be vehicle interactions where they, they have to get around each other, and entrances out into either a public roadway or the shared access with the, the, the auto auction user to the north of us. And so that's, we'd like to amend our, our variance request to, to, to limit the, the requirement to hold one-foot candle to the zones that are indicated in the, in the circled areas on that exhibit within the truck parking use. On Heinz Road and for the parcels to the south, no variation is being sought. Those areas, when they do finally develop, will be normal code compliance. So we, we hope that, that better explains the request and the intent behind it. As, as you're all likely probably aware, there's increasing sensitivity with, to the idea of excessive light for no reason, especially in, in areas that are like this, that are adjacent to permanent open space like the forest preserve that contains a variety of types of habitat that can be sensitive to light pollution. And so I think this, this really meets the needs for which the ordinance was established in the first place, but isn't excessive in the way it does it.
So one of the questions that I had had, you say this will be controlled access and gated, which it's not now, correct? Okay. So will there be certain hours that it, it is, that access is allowed, or will it just be certain, like you have to have a code in order to come in?
Correct. It'll be more of a, of a code or a FOB-type system where if you, you know, you have to be given permission to have, gain access to the site during, you know, these off-hour times.
So we are still at a point where it could be 24/7 access, you know, it's just, it's specific people will be allowed.
That's correct.
So there could, in theory, still be these dark zones. And I'm just, I'm imagining, like, I have a trailer. If we have to park that thing in pitch black, it's not going to be fun for anybody, including my neighbors. So how is that, how do you think that that will work when it, when there isn't? Because I do agree about the light pollution. But there is a safety aspect to be concerned with here as well.
And, and I think really what that exhibit's showing is, you know, the areas where we're showing the lighting is really just kind of specifically to deter, to, to, to show that in those specific areas, we want to, you know, light those areas per the code. That's not to say that we don't intend to have other lighting throughout the, the parking area, because we, we recognize the, the need for the lighting as well. You know, we're taking on feedback from all of our tenants as well, just to kind of, you know, gauge where things are at. So I want to, I just kind of want to state that, that what you see in this exhibit isn't, isn't only what we intend to light. There would be some additional lighting. It just may not be to the one-foot candle code that the village has.
Okay. That makes me feel a little bit better, because I'm like, I don't want to park here.
Erica, where did we leave this last week? Didn't we already vote on as far as the truck parking that we weren't going to allow it south of Heinz?
So the way that it was, it was voted on, and it was approved for the north half and not approved for the south half.
Yeah. All right. So this lighting variance will just be for the north half, which I think you guys already stated. And so what you're saying is these circles that are on here are going to be like the minimum that you're going to do, and you might do more. Would that be accurate?
Those, those are the areas that we would propose that would be held to the regulatory standard of, of one-foot candle minimum. There are other places that, that they'll adjust operationally as their, as their growth in tendency, the increases or decreases. I think what you're looking at is potentially some portable solar lights that are mounted on a concrete pedestal, and they'll kind of adjust things based on their, their vacancy rate.
Right.
Okay.
And with those solar lights too, kind of what we're learning is that there's some different options depending on which way you go. So when there's, there's motion detectors that are on a lot of these newer solar lights. So if they detect motion, the, the, they can increase their, the amount of lumens that they produce to light it up during activity, when there's activity by them. And then when there isn't activity, they could actually go to a lower amount of lumens to, to just limit that light when there's not any activity in the area.
Then I had a question on the gated access. Is this access just to open, or does it have to be also wanted or, or fobbed again to exit?
We're, we're kind of discussing how we want that to all play out, but definitely it will be a FOB or a code system to gain entrance. We may set up a site where it'd be a one-way in, one-way out, so that on that exit gate, it would just be an auto, just a, you know, there'd be some detection for, like, they'll either do detector loops or, or some sort of a, it'll detect motion as you gate, as you, you know, reach the exit gate, it'll automatically open. So.
Okay. And then I see, I see there's a, there's a plant back there already in, in this area on the other side of the detention pond. So there's outdoor lighting?
Correct.
For, for that already?
Yeah, there is lights there currently, yes.
Okay. All right. That's all, that's all the questions I had.
And on lighting, I did go there last night just to see how bright is it or dark. And it did seem like this north section seemed adequate, or like it didn't seem too dark. But like the south half felt too dark, but since we're just talking about the north half, it did seem like a decent amount, where you could kind of see in between the trucks and the trailers and kind of find your way around. And it did, it was hard to gauge last time without actually going out there. So I just went after dark, and it did seem all right on this north half.
So can I ask where the hardship is that you want this variance lowered to what we normally require with the ordinance?
Well, just more for the purpose of just, we're in the process of getting this lot put together, right? And that requires some, depending on how we go, we can either do it if it's a solar, or if there is the need to do it, or if we feel like we can't gain that. With the solar option, there would be the need to do some additional actual physical traditional electrically lit lights. We don't have the ability to currently do that just because of where the transformer comes in, the common transformer. And as we continue to extend that, we're seeing some voltage drop. So we're trying to get creative. And I, I think that there's just to the, to the, some of the feedback that we have had was that some of the neighbors to the north weren't too excited about the amount of light we were producing, or didn't want to see that. So we were just trying to make sure that we were providing a level of light that we thought was going to be adequate in areas where we needed it from a security standpoint, and be able to just make some adjustments in those areas that weren't, so that we can provide a level of, you know, security and safety, but, you know, do it in a way that was a little bit more friendly to the neighboring parcels or properties.
And to elaborate on that, it is expensive, but also to elaborate, there's, there's a couple of different elements to, to a variation. It's, it's either to a hardship or a unique circumstance. And I think from a lot of, a lot of our perspective here is that the unique circumstance is that we ordinarily think of straight zoning compliance as a public code. But in this particular case, there are compelling reasons not to go with straight zoning compliance and provide a steady one-foot candle of illumination over the entire trucking site in the form of, it will, it will likely generate neighbor complaints from the folks in Barrington to the north, as well as have a negative effect on the forest preserve. So when there's a unique circumstance like this, where there's a downside to straight compliance and no particular upside for the, the community at large to straight compliance, that's, that's a unique circumstance that, that also can warrant a variation.
Yeah. Is this currently the same zoning standard for like a shopping mall parking lot versus a truck parking gravel lot? Is it the same set of rules? And maybe there's a differentiation of like a more minimal approach for these gravel lots that are not as heavily trafficked by citizens. There are more people leaving their car for long-term parking.
So what's your question?
Is it the same as residential?
The requirement for a parking lot, or like a shopping parking lot?
Yeah, like the lighting at the shopping mall, is it the same as for here in manufacturing?
Just if you could explain.
I want to get that question answered. The question is, is the standard we're trying to apply, but they're trying to get a variance from?
It isn't.
Is it the same as what would be the standard for a shopping mall? Or is it less?
Let's, let's ask.
Since this is low activity, it's a lot of the standard requirement.
Okay. So it is a lower standard already?
And we're trying to go lower than that.
Right.
Can I ask when you plan to install the access control system?
I would say that would be as soon as, would be some point next year.
And one-foot candle, just can you explain that then? I mean, it's just the illumination that comes off of a candle at a distance of one foot?
I mean, that's how, that's how bright it feels to your eyeball.
Right. So think about that, guys. How much light does a candle give off at a foot away? That's how much light you're going to have on this parking lot.
Yeah.
That's what the ordinance asks for anyways. No, that's what they're requesting.
The ordinance actually does, for a low intensity use for this type, unless staff disagrees, our, the way I read is, is that it, the, the one-foot candle is the requirement. What we're asking for is variation, is that, that, that requirement only be applied in the circle regions on the exhibit, and that the other areas be left to the discretion of the applicant based on operational changes from time to time.
These people to the north that are complaining about the light, they're not East Dundee residents, so they haven't reached out to us. Who are they? Are they residents? Are they?
Is it the auto auction?
That's what we believe to be the case.
What's that?
That's what, that's what we believe to be the case.
We believe it is residence.
Yes.
They're Barrington residents, and they have reached out to us. Oh, they have reached out to you? Okay. That's fair. So there is no gated access right now. And you are currently parking in both north and south of Heinz Road, or you've got... So when, I would personally, like sometime next year, to have the gated access is a little vague for me to be comfortable with. So is there, would, you know, mid-next year, end of June work for you guys if we were to, to be able to impact on that, have or at least have something scheduled and actionable and a contract in place to get that secure area taken care of?
What, what we're currently kind of waiting for and able to really finish that plan and put into place is to get the Heinz Road extension installed, so that we can tie in off of that.
That's going to take years, right?
Which I think is scheduled for next year.
Late next year?
That's just the piece that connects up to Commonwealth?
Because all of our, because all of our driveways, all of our aprons are going to tie, at least one of the ones is tying into, into the Heinz Road extension.
Okay. So how, so if, if the Heinz Road doesn't exist right now, and that's where you have your main entrances, from what I can tell from the map, right? How are people entering, entering now?
Off of Healy.
They're entering off of Healy?
Correct.
Like where the second? Right, oh, I see.
Yeah, like halfway up past Heinz Road?
Yeah.
And there is a gate there, but it's just open.
Correct. It's not.
It's just like a manual gate.
It's not automated.
Got it.
So when does that get closed?
It does not. It does not. There's access to it 24/7.
Yeah, because there wouldn't be a key for each user to lock it and unlock it, the current gate.
But there is a gate. Why is it there if it's never closed, I guess?
I mean, it's, it's, it's there, and it certainly can be manually opened and closed, but it, it doesn't typically end up getting closed as much as we make requests from our tenants. So that's why I say to you that it's primarily open.
It is very open.
All right. Can we, yeah, could we condition it, in, in that case, and I understand your timing on that, can we condition on that within the, you know, three months of Heinz Road being opened, that you will have that installed and working and functioning properly?
If we can't do it in conjunction with, yes, I think that's reasonable.
I just threw that out there as an example. I don't know how you guys, everybody else feels about that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It should be conditioned. Yeah. Good.
So is this agenda item still limited to the north half? We're not...
For lighting.
We're not allowing parking on the south half through this like four-part motion?
Well, you're currently parking on the south end, aren't you?
There are trucks currently parked there now, yes.
Without village permission to do so.
Like I said, I wish I had an opportunity to speak to you folks, kind of, well, if, if, since you're asking the question, the reason being is we're currently actively filling the site. So we're not at our final grade yet. So in order for me to get to that point where I can reach a final grade, I need to displace those trucks while I'm grading that north half. If we were have, if we were at grade, then I think the conversation we would have would be different, but that is the reason why we have those trucks in the south portion right now.
And when do you anticipate the grading to be completed?
Sometime early summer, I think.
Uh huh. Okay.
So we're looking at middle end of next year, this kind of resolving itself?
On the north end?
Right. Well, and then there's moving up and... Okay.
Okay. So with regards to putting some conditions into the gating, because we're focusing just on lighting right now, is that a separate thing, or is that the kind of thing that we could add on to this? Or is it?
So there could be a motion to amend the proposed ordinance with conditions. So you could do that. We can hold this over again and have staff rework. That's the will of council, to bring it back with the conditions that you're requesting. Third alternative is it goes back to planning and zoning to rework that issue when it comes back here. And for one or two?
Well, can I ask, Cam, do you recall what planning and zoning said no on the variance? Can you give us a quick rundown as to why?
The explanation that the, oh, the camp, is that head of camp?
The law for camp was, yeah. Yeah, I meant to do with the proving of the hardship and the special situations, and not seeing anything other than not wanting to invest in improving the property. That was the primary reason. I think, it seems like the lighting's actually changed since I visited it. You know, I was with Andy when we went out yesterday, so I know, I don't know. It just feels different this time of year, with this guy being clear or whatnot, and being a little bit, a little bit better. So, but yeah, at the time, it was literally, we didn't feel that the two things were, were proven. And we felt, I know, we were with a special situation. There's other people who are by neighbors. Everyone has a neighbor, you know, so that one didn't really play, play too hard.
So at the time it came before the board, you didn't have this kind of lighting plan?
No, no, no. It was pretty much, there was no, they were going to do no changes on the lighting. Yeah. So it didn't look like that at all.
Okay.
We were pretty much just going to allow them to do.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
So, yeah, so this was definitely like an improvement from what we've seen. So I would be, I wouldn't be personally, well, I wouldn't say anything like that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So the, this is written as a one-year sunset on the south. From what I'm hearing, that's because there's grading going on. It's temporary to move things back and forth, but once that road goes in, it would be cleared of parking, is why there's the one-year sunset? Is that accurate?
Well, I'm not too sure why the one-year sunset was put down, put there, other than, I think I'm hearing some feedback and based on the conversation that you folks had at the last meeting, was that you weren't too interested in seeing trucks being parked on the south half and visible to Route 72, right? So we recognize that, and I think that's why maybe there was a one-year sunset. And I think that having that one-year sunset for us on the south side will allow us to get the final grading achieved on the north half. And then once that's done, we can transfer all of those trucks. Because that's, that's what we are seeing now. Those trucks that are currently parked on the south side were just displaced trucks from the north side where we had them prior. So that's, that's what our plan is here.
Yeah. Ultimately, the, the, the feeling in, correct, anybody correct me or, or jump in if you feel like I'm stating it, but we don't feel that truck parking right along 72 is the best use.
Sure.
For the facility and for anything longer term than getting you where you need to be on the north half.
Right. And, and we recognize that too, and I totally understand that. So, you know, even if we wanted to establish some sort of buffer, I think that might be something that, you know, I think it'd be worth maybe a conversation to have too. But just in, in, you know, just the big picture is, our plan is to develop the south half, obviously, and, and do the truck parking on the north. So once we can get to that final grading, we can, we can have all of the trucks consolidated to that north half.
So we didn't, we did not grant a one-year sunset.
Correct. So I...
On the south half. We denied the parking on the south half. End of story, period.
Correct. So...
And then let me just say, for you to say that you're parking down there right now because of the grading, I understand that what you're saying is you're moving trucks that would have been parked on the north side to the south side so that work can be done on the north side. Is that correct?
That's right.
Okay. So the other alternative would be to not have any trucks parked there at all, right? What is, what is the company that you actually own?
Alien Concrete Contractors is the name of the business that's...
Right. So you guys process concrete waste essentially?
Yeah, we're a heavy highway, civil construction company.
Yeah. That's what you do.
We do some, we do some...
You're not a truck parking mogul by trade.
No, 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 it's not. Correct. That's not, that's not our core business.
So, I mean, if that's not your core business, you don't need to have these trucks parked on the south side. You want to have these trucks, trucks parked on the south side as a replacement for them being parked on the north side while you guys regrade that. But, you know, that's, I don't know. That feels like it's, it's not a necessity. It's not, it's not, it's not part of your business plan.
Well, for this particular site, the parking is definitely part of that plan. And it's a use of that site too, when we purchased it. Park outside storage and parking was part of the use, which was, which was part, I mean, one of the reasons why we purchased the property.
Beyond the core activity that you have on the north end, that parking that's shown here is going to be idle, correct?
I'm, I'm, I'm sorry?
This, this land, land here that you'd show as parking on the north side is essentially going to be idle capacity for you.
No, it's, it's not idle. It's definitely not idle. There's, there's trucks and, and materials that are stored there currently during the, during the whole effort.
Right. But I mean, are you, are you, are trucks being parked there that are not part of Baylam?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, okay.
So what I was going to suggest was that, because the applicant wasn't here when we, when the board made the decision on the south half, that there could be further discussion about that, and they could provide additional information that wasn't provided in the past, that may sway one way or the other, um, but it sort of complicates the discussion about the lighting, so if we want to go forward with voting on the lighting and then talking about parking on the south half, we can do that, if we feel like this is all relevant to the same conversation, because it's the same site, like, I'll add some additional information about the parking on the south half at this point in time.
Yeah, it does seem related, if we do have temporary parking on the south and lighting is a concern for the temporary one-year period, um, and maybe we don't, but that might be good to hear, like, if we were to, cause my reasoning for saying, let's not do a one-year sunset is, I don't wanna allow parking for one year and then take it away, and I didn't understand the rationale as to why we would start parking on the south side and then pull it away later, but if it's temporary because of these logistic concerns, that's a little different for me, so.
Yeah, I agree, and from staff's perspective, when we initially reviewed this and made the recommendation for the one-year sunset, it was because we want to compel the property owner to develop the south portion, it's a very prime piece of real estate, and it could have a higher and better use than truck parking, it was unknown to us until today, that the desire was to temporarily put trucks there, so that the north half could be, continued to be graded, um, so we didn't know that, um, so, if there's a desire to reconsider the one-year on the south portion, that could be reconsidered, if there's not, then staff will move forward with citing them for having trucks on an area that I was supposed to have trucks for, and will enforce the ordinance that was passed a couple weeks ago.
Who's doing that grading, is that you guys?
Yeah, yeah, yes.
And you're saying you'll be done with it by summer?
That's my, my forecast at this point, right?
I'm okay with the temporary movement of it, it's not me to tell you if you should or shouldn't have truck parking, that's your business, so, um, I'm just all about, we need to work on the ordinance for lighting and working with that, so, I'm ready to move forward.
Well, then are we going to, are you guys going to light this southern area that you're temporarily using for parking at all?
That, that is, that is our plan.
You're going to light it, but?
Well, so, in, in areas where we have trucks parked, that's, that is why I am looking at all of these solar options, so that I have the flexibility of being able to put lights where we need them for security and purposes, so, um, that is correct, so we wanna provide some level of lighting there while we have trucks parked.
I did not reflect it that way on the exhibit that I passed out, but I think, I think we could do it in a very consistent manner, where we have, uh, if there is temporary truck parking south of Heinz, uh, we would, uh, we would commit to providing the same level of intensity at locations where the aisle accesses, uh, other aisles, uh, in an intersection, or out onto the, uh, onto Healy. So, the, the, the principle would be consistent, and if we can figure out a way to codify that, so that staff can enforce it for you. So, so the lighting that would be on the south end, just let, I ask, I mean, is it ballot type of fixtures, or are they gonna be pole-mounted, or what?
They would, they would be pole-mounted.
So, just to clarify, if, if the board did wanna reconsider that one-year on the south half, or amend it to even six months, or July 1 next year, or something along those lines, because it's not on the agenda, we would just have to refer it to our next agenda and place it back on to reconsider, Kelly, can you?
Yeah, we could actually, you could make a motion to reconsider, um, the amendment that was made last time to the ordinance, and then it would appear on the next regular, um, board meeting agenda.
Okay.
Your rules allow for that in the code, so.
I'm okay with it, if it is a temporary use of it during construction, and that there's no intention of it being permanent, and that's the, the south of Heinz Road is for developing and not for having truck parking long-term, then I'm okay with it.
So we, we need a motion to amend last week's or?
Motion to reconsider the amendment to the ordinance that was passed last week, a second, a roll call, and then it'll appear on the next regular meeting.
I will make a motion to reconsider.
Can we first handle the, one of the motions on the table?
Oh, we have a motion on the table?
We do.
Is there a motion?
Yeah.
It's the lighting on the north half.
Yes, alright, so.
Were there any other questions concerning that?
Is there gonna be an amendment to that one, or no?
Andy, Rich?
No.
Yeah, yeah, so, I would like to.
Can I type up what you're saying, I just wanna be, so that I can break it?
It might be a bunch of gobbledygook, but I will get there, I will get my intent across, it might not be.
Motion by Mahoney.
Um, I would, uh, to include the condition that access to the lot north of Heinz Road at the two access points is functioning within three months of Heinz Road opening.
Gated access.
Gated access, Bob, secure, whatever, however you want it.
Do you think it would be better to say 90 days? Cause three months could be.
90 days.
90 days.
90 days, sure.
Okay, so, the motion that I'm hearing from, uh, board member Mahoney is a motion to amend the proposed ordinance, to state that, uh, to include that the condition that access to the north, to the lot north of Heinz Road at the two access points is functioning within 90 days of Heinz Road reopening.
Gated, secure gated access.
Where do you want that in the sentence?
I wanna, I wanna look over your shoulder.
That's why I type it out.
And I think opening instead of reopening, cause it's not a road yet.
Secure, secure gated access. All done, born of a baby. It takes a team.
So, motion by board member Mahoney is to amend the ordinance to include the condition that secure gated access to the lot north of Heinz Road at two access points is functioning within 90 days of Heinz Road opening.
Amend the ordinance or amend the motion?
Amend the motion.
Your motion, there's a proposed ordinance with conditions, this would be proposed, um, an amendment to the ordinance.
Adding the condition to the ordinance, and amending the motion.
The proposed ordinance, yes.
Uh, second.
The second, okay, now we do a roll call.
Okay, trustee.
Roll call that, I just have one question, who, are we doing the Heinz Road extension, is that under our legal policy?
So, the, Heinz Road is currently being designed, almost completed in design, um, but as far as how we fund the construction, that hasn't come before the board yet for a decision, we did apply for the Cook County grant for investing Cook last year, we didn't get it, but we had a very good meeting with the folks at Cook County, they think it's a great project, they encouraged us to reapply again this year, so we will. But, once we figure out a funding mechanism, we'll bring it to the board for either approval or disapproval, so, the, the road is contemplated, much needed, and hopefully going to be realized within the next year, but it has not yet come before the board for a decision on how to fund it.
How'd you get the naming rights? And how much did it cost you?
Somebody wants to catch it.
Oh, it has nothing to do with the Heinz man, uh huh, yeah, right.
Do we have a roll call?
Roll call? Okay, let's call the question.
Trustee Saviano?
Yes.
Trustee Tribber?
Yes.
Trustee Satter?
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Kuntzey?
Yes.
Trustee Britton?
Yes.
Yeah, it's a motion to adopt the ordinance as amended.
So now, I, do I need to remake the motion to adopt the ordinance as amended?
Okay, so I'm, do I have to read the whole thing again? Okay. I will make a motion to adopt item A as previously read in, as amended.
Second.
Trustee Saviano?
Yes.
Trustee Tribber?
Yes.
Trustee Satter?
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Kuntzey?
Yes.
And trustee Britton?
Yes.
Alright, so was the issue of the motion to reconsider, I think was.
Now that.
Now I'll make a motion to reconsider, um, what was the word?
What motion? It would be a motion to reconsider the amendment that was passed to the ordinance at the last meeting concerning, uh, 590 Healy Road.
So moved.
Second?
She read it so well.
Okay, trustee Saviano?
Yes.
Trustee Tribber?
Yes.
Trustee Satter?
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Kuntzey?
Yes.
And trustee Britton?
Yes.
Now that will appear on the next regular agenda.
Um, is that, are we done with this item then, or is there more that we have to discuss as far as variations?
We were done with this item as far as that?
That, uh, that variation concerned both the lighting and the surface, the non-paved surface. So they, they still have one outstanding special use they've applied for, but hasn't yet been heard by P and Z, and then we'll rehear the truck parking request.
So on the next time, we'll decide on the lighting for this south period during the temporary use, is that coming next time?
My understanding was versus him and the sunset for next agenda, and then he already said he was gonna use the lighting for the pole.
Right, okay.
We'll talk about that next time.
Yeah.
Yeah, alright, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, we're moving on, we'll take item A, a, this'll be a discussion, um, for elements that should be incorporated into the request for proposal, the RFP, for the former Hager Pottery site, Seven Maiden Lane East Dundee, Illinois 60118, that the village is purchasing for redevelopment. So, Erica, would you like to take this one, just let us?
Sure, so, at our last meeting, we, the village board approved the purchase of the property, and staff is working on drafting the RFP for this property. I've had some conversations with some board members about what you all would like to see at that site, um, but as we draft this RFP, we would like to incorporate uh, as much feedback as possible from the board to make sure that we're directing potential developers to build what is the community's desire, uh, so, would like to hear what your thoughts are on what you'd like to see there, and if there's any must-haves, any please-don'ts, and, you know, what, what your vision is for the site.
Well, I, I can start out, um, obviously, um, multi-unit residential is probably the most obvious choice for the actual factory site, um, and that can accommodate, I've been told, anywhere from, you know, two to 300 units, my big concern would be density and an in-and-out. We've got one in-and-out at Van Buren in 72, and we've got one in at South River in 72. Obviously, to the south, if the people hop on Duncan and continue south, that's, that's fine, but I, I'm, I'm concerned that we're gonna end up with a real quagmire, if you will, traffic-wise, with, um, South River. So, uh, is it gonna overload Van Buren, I guess is the question, and so, if, if that, you know, one of the concerns, I think, is we gotta focus on density, and whether or not current traffic patterns are gonna be able to handle it.
I'd love to hear from the board members who are neighbors. What do you want in your neighborhood?
You can call me out.
Sorry.
Yeah, I'm concerned about that too, especially rush hour over there, and when the school and manual gets out, it's already terrible at that light at Van Buren, um, so there are things that exist currently that jam up traffic, so I feel like something would have to be reconfig, reconfigured, or work on not trying to get the most people in there, I like the multi-use idea too, similar to DC Cobb's, the boss on top, something like that, where you have restaurant use, but definitely worried about the traffic pattern.
I do wonder, we've talked somewhat about their commercial use, I, I'm having a hard time seeing how we're going to be able to fit, um, you know, on, on Water Street, it's a one-way street, I feel like if it's going to have commercial elements on it, it's going to need to be two-way, and I don't see how you can make that road two-way, given the distance between made-to-measure and vans right now. I don't think you could, you know, it's been, that's been discussed as well, and the only way to do that would be to reconfigure that intersection, which would be some pretty heavy surgery, we'd have to move, um, Dairy Queen, we'd have to shift that, obviously, I-DOT would have to be considered, they're gonna have to give us the blessing on changing out the light. Erica and I had a conversation with AT&T on the purchase of the easternmost half of the parking lot, um, that is at AT&T, which would give us an ability to angle that road through the intersection, but. That's not really answering my question though, what I'm asking, I'm talking about is the distance between vans and made-to-measure, not the other side of the road. Well, it would affect both, because obviously, the building that occupies vans right now, if, if that long-term view of this were to come, you know, come about, the building that, that advances there would have to go away, uh, either that or, you know, I mean, something would obviously have to give, because you wouldn't be able to have an in-and-out, you know, two-way traffic right there. So, um, yeah, it would be a, a part of a much bigger conversation, so that's another complication on the development of the Hager property, so.
So we're really focused on Van Buren, right, as the main road?
I guess what I would ask to focus on first is, is there a, a desire to have just residential? It's actually the first time I'm hearing that there would be potential commercial there. So, is there a desire to have commercial there, or is there a desire to just have residential?
Well, we've talked in the past about, you know, using this as an extension of the downtown, essentially, and in my mind, that's always been some sort of commercial element on the water side, uh, you know, rivers, the water streets.
Me as well.
No. Rivers, South River, sorry. Yeah, I think either way, whether we have residential, or whether we have commercial slash residential is, is gonna, you know, certainly boost up traffic, um, you know, Joe, what do you think, I mean, are there any real obvious pitfalls that jump out at you?
Yeah, well, something will need to change to address the traffic, but I think, once you get used to it, and what kind of traffic you have, and then you could, yeah, a traffic report that would address what the local traffic is, what the east traffic is, and things to take place to handle.
Deciding on what uses ahead of time would probably limit the type of developer we're gonna be able to go after, Chief, do you see traffic, um, and, and, you know, if any development, whether it be just residential or commercial and all residential, being, uh, necessary to have a, a two-way in-and-out at both River Street and Van Buren? Or, what, does what we have accommodate?
Well, I think certainly, as, as you mentioned, I think you'd have to look at the load on Van Buren, and also the light timing, all through the different lights in 72 to be able to, to accomplish some of that. I would agree that, uh, trying to widen River Street at that point is gonna be a challenge without looking at some other kind of intersecting, uh, east and west routes besides Maiden Lane, you know, so, is there a way to try to, to diffuse it a little bit? But, uh, as we said, you know, traffic is a system, and it's like water, and it seeks its natural, so, so that's some things the board needs to consider.
Right, right, I, I, I'm just thinking about down the road, you know, 15, 20 years, uh, I don't know if that, this would necessarily take that long, uh, however, it's the rework I'm worried about, if we were to redo, um, or if we were to, you know, establish something there, uh, and then find that we're in a snag, you know, traffic-wise, then we gotta reconsider everything on the, on the western side of the property, and so.
And if the forces are gonna reroute the bike?
Right, that's considerable too, that's a consideration as well, cause that's right there, you know, unfortunately, that's on the east side of the. Unfortunately, that's on the east side of the road. If we were on the west side, it would probably be, uh, you know, a little bit, uh, I don't know, maybe easier to accommodate the change that we're talking about, but...
So I feel like we're getting into the weeds a bit about this, and it's, we're trying to figure out just what needs to go on the RFP, right? What do we wanna see, not what don't we want to see? So, um, this is a, we have no proposal in front of us to consider. We need to get the proposals. So let's start with what, what do we want, right? What are things that we wanna see?
Okay.
Minimally some residential, right? It's either mixed use or...
It's a, it's a property that is surrounded on all four sides by a residential.
Right.
It should be residential.
Yes.
Primarily, yes.
Yes.
For a park, or a mix of a park and residential, or?
Yes.
There's, there's also, um, there's a church on, on, to the north. Church property to the north, there's residential to the east, there's residential to the south.
Except for part of its business.
There is, there is residential to the north, actually, on, uh, the street prior to the church.
Oh, I see, yeah, 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 where their park, that little parking lot is, that we keep forgetting about.
Well, the other side of that parking lot, there's, that road is, is houses there.
Yeah, I see it now.
All four sides are residential, it's like five or six.
So, um, and then there is, um, the, the lifeline and, and that on the far south end.
Yes.
So you're kind of in a mix, plus there's also kind of the access to the river.
Right.
Which, big picture, like, let's go up thirty thousand feet. Ideally, I'd like to see some high-end residential condominiums, um, that would be in around, in or around the same value as some of the single-family, um, that exists. Ideally, it would be great if there were some small storefronts as well to expand the retail area. That would also need to include, any residential would also need to include parking within either the greater building or as, you know, surface parking. Um, and, and, and a lot of attention to the area that is facing the river, that doesn't already have development on it, to, to, to really be amenitized to appreciate the river. And as, as, you know, that would be a positive selling point to anybody that wants to live there. As if, you know, is a little park, is there benches, is there a gazebo, I don't know. But to really highlight and not develop that is a whole nother thing, if, if it could be developed, because it might be in a floodplain and all that other kind, you know, regulatory stuff. So that would be my thirty thousand foot vision of what I would like to see there. That would alleviate your concerns about density, because I agree, I don't think our, I'm, I'm not sure, we can, again, go back to the people that are, are the neighbors here on the, on the board. I don't, I don't have an interest in seeing, um, necessarily apartments, um, that would be rented, um, unless it was with a really good company that ha- a management company. But to have ownership, have, have people have ownership and, um, and keep the density, you know, within a reasonable amount. It's an attract, it's, it's, it's an attractive location.
It's got a lot of potential, definitely does.
Erica, have we just given you too much?
Well, I just was gonna point out a couple of things. One is, you're correct, there is a floodplain on the portion closest to the river, so that's probably not developable. Um, so that, that will probably have to be some kind of green space. But also, we're contending with the cost that will be required to clean the site up. And so I just want everybody to be prepared for the fact that the cost to demolish the building and do any kind of remediation that might be necessary will probably have some direct correlation to what somebody would propose to build there, because they're gonna have to recoup their costs.
Right.
Now, that could be offset by any kind of village contribution to make it something more palatable. Uh, 'cause we don't want somebody to say, oh, it's gonna cost me X amount of money to clean this site up, uh, and therefore I wanna build, you know, three hundred apartments. If that were the case, and, you know, the, the middle ground was some kind of compromise, we, the village could potentially pitch in some amount of TIF contribution to make that a little bit more palatable.
For, to recoup the cost of the remediation and or, um, yeah, clearing?
Right, but, you know, there's, there's a lot of possibilities for the site. I do agree, it's, it's a very attractive site. I do think we're gonna get some good ideas. Um, and it sounds like, from what I'm hearing, there's an openness to both residential and commercial, so we're really like giving people a pretty good carte blanche to use their expertise to come up with something that fits the site. Um, so, 'cause we're not limiting it by saying, well, it must only be residential, it must only be commercial. Somebody might propose to only do one or the other, or a mix of the both, but we're sort of keeping it open to that possibility. Yeah, I, I have some desire to see what people come up with, to be honest. Because it's like I have too many ideas for what could go there. So I'd like to see, I, I don't want a huge apartment complex taking the entire area. I'd love to see green space where there's already floodplains, it's probably gonna have to be green space anyway, but I don't know how to fit it all, you know, so...
None of us are developers, so we might end up not even knowing what we don't know here, which is likely so. But did we get that phase one report from the, the previous owners? So that allows us to know what, I mean, yeah, how, what is the extent of the contamination on all of this?
Yes, so I did get that. I will forward that to the board, and then I would recommend that we do a phase two as soon as we have ownership of the property.
Is it helpful to say in the RFP that we're open to ideas that involve changing the roads in some way and just let them bring ideas? Instead of us figuring out the logistics of what you would do with the road, or?
Yes.
Cast the wide net and see how they're inspired, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Can I add one quick thing? I know there was a discussion earlier about the width of South River Street, right away. Village owns from south of seventy-two down to approximately a hundred eighty feet south of Maiden. We own the parcel, probably that includes the Fox River Trail.
Right.
So our right-of-way width through there is approximately forty-four feet, all the way down from seventy-two down to just off of Maiden, which would accommodate two-way traffic over time.
If we got rid of the bike trail, it would have to be diverted.
Correct, all the bike trail, Fox River Trail is on village-owned property, so we, we are responsible for maintaining that portion of the trail.
No, what you're saying is, we would have to, to move the bike trail.
Correct.
We'd have to divert it.
Because, actually, I already go, rather go right up to the made-to-measure building.
Yeah.
So it's within, according to the Jax maps, can't count it, within a forty-two, forty-five minutes. So it would have to be an offset, so just, I just wanted to mention that is...
More information.
Yep, absolutely, good to know.
Good to know. All right, I think that's enough for us to get started.
I think so.
I wonder if somebody could design a really interesting idea along the river, something that would incorporate the bike path into it.
Yeah.
Yeah, maybe it's worth pointing out that we're doing a riverfront redevelopment and that something could be tied into that plan too, just to open the net to more ideas. 'Cause the bike path could maybe get moved over to the river, or, or whatever ideas they have.
Take a jog.
Yeah, we will include that as well.
Maybe Need to Better would be willing to move their building.
Yeah, if we hack into some things and give them some spots in Hager, or?
So you've got?
I think we have enough.
All right, then we'll move on to item C, if we could have a motion.
Would someone be allowed to ask a question about this?
Yeah, please do.
Yeah, please do.
Um, I think for a while, I've been in the town here, um...
Can you, sorry, we're mic'd, we're mic'd right now, so...
I was just wondering, um, how does the, uh, money that they paid for the lease for the easement, how does that affect you guys in the future? This is a fifty-five-year lease for the water tower, for the cell tower.
Cell tower, yeah.
There's like five hundred thousand dollars of value left.
Well, that's gonna have to be figured into the RFP. Whoever wants to develop that land is going to have to house those cell, those cells. It doesn't have to necessarily be on that water tower, they could construct some other tower.
But I mean, the easement's on the ground for fifty-five, well, forty-nine years now. I mean, they paid six hundred thousand, so there's value there that they're gonna want.
Our understanding, I think, is that the location of those towers could be negotiated, but that they will have to be housed.
I mean, no one's gonna want that tower there anymore. I, I don't know that much about it, I was wondering if you guys, how do you handle that in the future? Developer comes in, or do you have to buy out the phone company, or?
No, we, I think we would hopefully look to work, find them a new home for those antenna, you know, on, on one of our other towers, one of our other water towers.
Okay, and then the second thing was the lot to the north of there that, um, Hager still owns, not, um, Jean, but...
The original Hager.
Are you guys gonna put that in a package too and purchase that, so you have? Is that gonna be added into as part of it?
They haven't agreed to sell it, yes.
Oh nine and oh ten, I don't know the exact pin numbers.
Yeah, who owns that?
Hager.
Oh.
They kept one little parking lot, and they sold it to, uh, Mr. Staples.
But anyway, I thought it would make more sense if you guys were to buy this whole place.
We would love to.
Add that into...
They haven't offered to sell it to us.
Did you guys, I mean, did you guys?
We have a question, yeah.
I did too.
Well, that was my two questions.
Okay, great, thank you.
I just wanna say for the record, I love the water tower, and I look at it all the time.
So there's one.
Forget more water towers.
Do you have one in your backyard, or?
Yeah, I do, actually.
Okay, so let's go, uh, it was item C, correct?
I'll make a motion to authorize the village administrator to execute a contract with Gerald Hines and Associates to prepare a request for proposals, RFP, for the design and construction of a parking garage in downtown East Dundee in the amount of twenty-one thousand five hundred dollars.
Second.
Okay, discussion. Do you have any questions on this one?
This is just getting the RFP going.
Okay. Why, who, who's writing the RFP for the Hager property?
Staff.
Staff is.
So why can't staff write an RFP for this?
We don't have the technical capability to talk about parking garages.
This, like all this technical...
Essentially, our village staff would be doing it. Just be, wouldn't be, uh...
It's a bigger project than it normally takes on, and it would be a chunk. Exactly, might separate it out.
I still don't understand, I don't see the value of this garage when it costs four times as much as a flat lot and gets us not more than, you know, not even, uh, twice as many spots, maybe fifty percent more spots.
I think that's part of the value of doing the, the RFP, is we'll be able to actually say for sure, this is how much it's gonna cost, and this is how many more spaces it'll get us versus a surface lot.
Right.
Right now, we just have a lot of, we think it'll be this, or we think it'll be that, but until we actually, you know, get that.
I def- like, that's the thing, I want the RFP to say one thing, another thing, how much will it actually cost? Like, what will this actually look like? How many spots will we actually get?
Is this RFP going to be for that property that, by the way, we don't own?
Yes.
Why, why are we asking for an RFP for a property we don't own?
'Cause staff is optimistic that we will own it at some point in the near future.
We've had conversations. Well, and, and they've all failed, so...
I think it's sort of a two-way street, the, the property owner's also looking for movement on the part of the village to see if there's actually something that's gonna happen there. Uh, I don't think, I don't think the property owner is interested in selling us the lot if it's just for surface parking. But I could, you know, I can't speak for him, that's just what I've inferred from conversations. But, um, you know, there's also, there's been a lot of discussion about adding more parking, but there hasn't been any actual movement towards adding more parking, so I think that the property owner would like to see some form of movement towards exploring the option of more parking.
Since this, since there's multiple gravel lots in the downtown, can this RFP also take into account other ones that we also don't own?
Uh, like the AT&T lot, or like the...
Yeah, or the one by Dukes?
It, it could.
Just a thought.
It could, but I, the, the highest and best use for the other gravel lot in question would definitely be a park or some green space or extension of the depot area, community space, so...
I'm just saying, in case we don't acquire that lot, then it's not wasted money, 'cause there were also, um, we got some information on other spots, I just, that was just a thought.
Yeah, I understand.
Like insurance.
Well, not currently for this amount, though, this amount that we're talking about here is strictly for that one site. But we could expand the effort. Is there any other questions, comments? No?
Trustee Saviano?
Yes.
Trustee Triver?
Yes.
Trustee Satter?
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Coonsey?
Yes.
And trustee Britton?
Yes.
Okay, and that'll take us to item D, another discussion item. We're proposed change for the village of on-street parking regulations during snow season and or snow and ice events. So, this one was taking us from a three-inch warning down to a two. Phil, did you wanna run us through it?
Sure. Yeah, I was also gonna mention that trustee Britton had brought this concept forward too about one-way str- or, uh, one-sided parking on certain streets during snow events, because there are many streets that are not wide enough to accommodate, uh, the travel lane for an emergency access when there's snow that pushes the cars closer to the middle of the road. So Phil took it a little step further and talked about the sort of blanket village-wide regulation of the minimum amount of snow for certain scenarios, but also we wanna have a conversation about those, those, uh, potential one-sided restrictions.
Thank you. So presented this evening, as Erica Sterling mentioned, we are presenting a, for discussion, a proposed code amendment to reduce. So as, as mentioned, currently, after three inches of accumulated snow, parking is prohibited on, on all village streets. Because some of our, it's more common, two inches is a more common snow total. Our surrounding communities have implemented the two-inch accumulation total. Although interesting in carpentry as well, goes down to one inch, but we're recommending as staff, a two-inch accumulation total, which would, at that point, then prohibit all on-street parking for twelve inches after the snowfall event, so it'll give public works an opportunity through the streets. And then the other part of tonight's discussion would involve what to do if two inches or three inches remains, or if you decide ultimately to amend the code, reduce it to two inches. Are there some ideas or options for zero to two inches? One would be to create kind of an odd-even parking restriction, um, on even number days. You park on the even numbered side of the street, the same, on odd-numbered days and on the odd-numbered side of the street. Also, there's an option for, um, throughout the winter season, December one through March thirty, for example, would be to designate certain streets, um, for one-sided parking if we so, you ultimately so desire, so choose, so... And there's a, obviously, a little more discussion on road width, the width of our plows, two-way traffic, on-street parking, and so on and so forth. So it, there are some tight conditions on some of our roads. This, these proposed restrictions would primarily, not the two-inch or three-inch down to two-inch, that would be village-wide, but, uh, more specifically, the, um, odd-even would apply to residential streets as opposed to some of the commercial areas.
So the odd-even is, either we do the odd-even, or we say from December until March, only one side?
Correct.
Okay, so it's between those two options is what we have in front of us?
Yes.
Wait, the odd-even is one side?
It is, but it alternates, as opposed to it's always the same side.
It is, but it alternates as opposed to it's always the same side that's, that we like parking.
I guess is my question.
Yeah, besides being confusing.
I, I suppose there's a couple of schools of thought there. One is, you might have one group of residents would like to see parking kind of alternated, um, from one side to the other, as opposed to a solid winter-long restrictions. Say, I don't want parking in front of my house, others might be okay with it. That would be one consideration, I suppose, given to, to the community.
Well, if we were to go to this one side of the street, parking on certain residential streets.
We would designate them, yes.
That would be designated, how would you clear the side that's parked up?
We would have to wait until all the cars are gone.
Right.
And so that's the, the challenge now is on, cars that are parked down the street, we plow around them and during heavier snow events, cars that.
But there's no parking from two to four.
Yeah, so yours every night, like you do it to the outer street.
So every night, cars are gone.
Oh.
Yeah.
Okay.
Village-wide, there's no street parking from two to four.
I believe it's six.
Two to six.
Two to six, sorry, or two to.
So there would be the opportunity to plow some of those streets that would have, potentially have.
Correct. Although on occasion, there are instances where someone will park down the street overnight and.
You get a handy-dandy little ticket.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I like the simplicity of just saying this side you don't park on, this side you do, as opposed to everyday switching, especially thinking of like at Rosie's to put signs up that explain to people.
Yeah, that's not going to go well.
Which day of the week it is and figure out which side has even or odd numbers, like, I think people will be confused.
And that's up to two inches. For example, if, if you ultimately authorize reducing the three-inch down to two inches, it would be anything up to two inches. And then anything beyond two inches, for example, it would just be no-on-street parking whatsoever.
Yeah. But the one-sided, so just for clarification, during the snow season, there would be only one side of the street parking the entire time, not just during an actual snowfall?
That's one option as well. So it could be during snow events and/or just a winter-long blanket restriction.
I'm only thinking because some of like, you know, are that whole area, if there are people parked on both sides of the streets and ambulance cannot make it down.
It's hard.
And it's hard, it's hard in my truck to make it down if there are people on both sides of the streets during the summer. So, in the winter, when everything's kind of, everybody's got their piles of snow and nobody wants to open a car door into a snowbank, they park three feet away from the curb on both sides. It, I think it should be specific streets based on actual measurements, not the eye check, not the, I think it's too tight. Because I'd be happy to be proven wrong and an ambulance actually can squeeze down the street, but I really don't think it can.
Well, that's a great point. I, one of my notes that I have is, we have streets that exceed thirty-two width, excuse me, thirty-two feet wide, anything. My recommendation would be anything under thirty feet, for example, would
Right.
apply to this. Roads that are wider than thirty, thirty feet may not necessarily apply to this restriction.
I think the, you know, the road that you're talking about is a problem because of, uh, all the parking from a business.
Yeah.
And if we say you can only park on one side, that's going to exasperate that business's parking issue. Uh, so it's kind of a trade-off, like, we're, I, I mean, I don't know. I, I feel like, uh, if we're gonna say, and I, and I will say, I, I kinda like the idea of just making it one se- like, if the road is too narrow to fit cars on both sides and a car in the middle, like, we should just make it permanent one-sided parking only. I don't think that's that big of a deal, except for on a couple of roads that are right next to Rosie's that, uh, fill up every, you know, Friday and Saturday, uh, good for Rosie's.
Yeah.
Um, but it makes it difficult, difficult for everybody else, so it's like, do we make it difficult for everybody else or do we make it difficult for Rosie's?
Well, my, my biggest concern is whether or not my neighbors have a fire.
Yeah.
Because if, if my, if my neighbor in the middle of my street has a heart attack.
Right.
An ambulance can't get to them.
Concern, very, very much so.
So that's.
To limit that, you know.
That's, that's, that's why I want it to be, I want it, I don't want it rule-based, right? I want it number-based for measurements and things like that, but it's really worst in the winter when there are these huge snow mounds and people are parking three feet away from the side. You know, there's good parking and bad parking even during the summer, but.
The day that, uh, the parade went, I was in that area. And that road, uh, is in Michigan, I think, was parked both sides.
Yeah.
And it was tight just the way it was. It was no snow taken into account. I mean, it was already tight.
And it's not the only street in the area.
Imagine what would've happened if somebody started coming the other way. It would've been a problem.
Right. There are, I mean, there are.
It is a two-way street.
It is.
Exactly.
You get to, you get to play Frogger and duck in the.
Yeah.
Um, but I mean, there are a couple other streets in that, in the neighborhood that are also tight. I think Winholt's or one of the other ones is also, is even, I think, smaller than Michigan. Um, but, and there are some in downtown area that I think would be affected as well because parking from the businesses also parks on these tiny little narrow streets, so I just, I'm not. Admittedly, they came up because this is my street, but also this needs to be any street in the village that has this measurement. You have to be able to fit an ambulance if parking's on both sides. You have to.
I could say Lincoln only has a one-sided street.
Yeah.
And it's very nice.
Yeah.
And whenever somebody violates that, I'm the first person.
I can't fit my car by you, so.
Uh, Van Buren also has a one-sided parking that's
Right.
Yeah.
Blocked out nicely.
Yeah.
It's got that. But, uh, yeah.
Yeah, like I said, my, my biggest concern is the winter months because it's, it's literally impossible. I'd be happy to examine where problem areas are the rest of the time, but it's coming up on snow season, we're about to get a blizzard.
Yeah, in three days.
Guessing I'm gonna be stuck at home until after Christmas.
So, I guess I would just like to ask, um, Gary, what are your thoughts? Because this is going to affect you if we, if we do this, maybe primarily.
I don't think you'll like, no, you know, it's. Unfortunately, it does. I'm one of the few streets, I think, that where there's a business on it. We have to try to work with it. I hear your mother talking on the avenue, she says it's downright, and, uh, you know, I'm figuring out thoughts, I don't know, like in winter, if it's like, it's almost like if you made it like, uh, one way or something, you know how you get people going? Winter is this, summer, no matter if it's winter or summer, you can't get by without it. Like, she says, it does come in. I feel for everybody down there. I, it's a horrible. It's a horrible situation we have, but it's just, uh, you know, unfortunately, I'm the one that has that right there. You know, I gotta, I gotta address that and it's just, if I'm here, I wanna hear it.
Yeah.
Sure.
What I'm, you know, but I'll use your guys' better judgment saying that. I don't wanna hurt anybody.
Yeah.
You know, I want people to be safe, feel safe, that's, that's marked up my business, I want people to feel safe.
Right.
So it's just like, i- it, it's winter, just for winter, correct?
That's what, that's what's right about us.
It's not, it's not beating up that bad for one, one side, but I'm, I'm, I'd only say it was probably our side. You would want to be parking over the apartments on your side, Sarah, because they're apartments, so.
Right, there's a large chunk that's.
I mean, I can't be friendly. People, you know, like to say, oh, you're taking back parking space. I always tell the neighbors, do you have a party, let a few, I have cones. I'll come down there, cone off, I, you know, three, four, five spots, but better than nothing. I try to be neighborly, but it's just like, if you do it, I think that would be the side
Yeah.
you would do.
Yeah, we'd want, I mean, we, I agree that we'd wanna provide as much parking as we could. You know, as much street parking as possible, or as, as reasonable, especially if we're eliminating a whole side. So, the side with more driv- or fewer driveways is where we want to allow the parking.
Is there any issue with that thing or cheese or?
No, I, I would agree on the driveway piece, cause that always makes it a little less obvious. The only thing I ask is that whatever the side, is that it's, is able to be consistently enforced.
Yes.
So, odd-even gets challenging
That's.
if it's specific date range, great.
Yeah.
Or if it's not annual. Yeah.
Right.
From my, from my thought on that, is that it should be, you pick a side.
Yes.
That's it, and we post a sign.
Yes.
That says exactly what they're all in.
December to March.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it may be a blanket, even side of the street.
Yeah.
Or whatever side that is.
Or just pick a side and sign the, sign the other one. Yeah, I, the odd-even, I think, is a no. For, that's asking people to do math.
So what if we say, uh, for this winter, as a task, uh, we try this out? Do we wanna do it on snow events only or just all winter, I guess is the question?
Well, snow events is separate. So the snow, the two inches, the two-inch snowfall with no parking on any street within twelve hours of a two-inch snowfall is a separate issue.
So that's just Eric.
Cause that's actually in the code, it's three inches right now. There's not supposed to be any street parking within twelve hours of a snowfall.
Okay.
So really the odd or even or restriction would be for less than two inches of snow?
So, would it be possible, Erica, to, uh, write this so that it's for this season only? And then we could revisit it, you know, next year and see how it went, see how many people we made mad, that kind of thing?
Well, our next meeting is until January, so we would have to, you know, make it go into effect with some notice to the neighbors. So realistically, we're looking at sort of like maybe a two-month pilot of like February, March. Um, so that, you know, might be enough time period to discern if it's successful or not, or if there's tweaks we need to make in advance of the next snow season.
Yeah, I guess we can just repeal it.
Oh, March.
Yeah.
St. Patty's.
Well, with special events, we could make them, uh, you know, accommodations, everything.
Yeah, we may have to do something for, I mean, unless there's six feet of snow on the ground, because the problem still exists if there's snowbanks.
Yeah, cause there, there are covers that can go over the science too that can indicate that.
Yeah, cause I would not, I mean, if there's no snow on the ground, I would not want this to be something that you can't park on both sides on St. Patrick's Day. That would be, that's no fair.
They only have our priorities.
I know, I know how busy my neighborhood gets during that parade and I am not messing with that. That is not happening.
And as we recall last, or earlier this year, we had sub-zero temperatures that were close to it on St. Patrick's Day. We could easily have had a foot of snow if
Exactly.
precipitation and our temperatures were ideal.
And then this one year it was seventy.
Yes.
Yeah.
That year, I think parking on both sides is, but again, I mean, it's still the snowbanks, it's still an ambulance going down the road. Those concerns are still there, especially if there's snow on the ground. But I do think if there's no snow, we should, we should look at. It's really, it's literally snow on the ground is the problem with park, with the street parking on both sides on that road, because people park away from the curb. It's not, it's not the plowing, it's the narrowness of the street.
And we've also seen it, not only emergency response vehicles, police and fire, but garbage trucks.
Yeah.
Uh, delivery trucks, I mean, obviously, uh,
Right.
online deliveries are frequent these days and.
Yeah.
Gary, can I ask you if that house just to the east of, right behind
Pardon?
Rosie's, the house just to the east, is that, at one time we discussed that that might be future parking for you, is that still on your radar?
Yeah, I mean, it's, you know, my part of the world, yes, but I don't get that spot, and I've got other issues, you know, and do things that are, you know, I need to bring to you guys. I hope they have this solved, or you're coming here within a couple of months.
Okay, just curious. Thank you.
And at least February's not your busy, February's not the busy time.
So, um, I guess, my thought is, uh, for this winter season, one side on roads that are less than, what, thirty feet, you said? So we would wanna know, when we vote on this, we would wanna know how many roads that is, maybe if we're highlighting them. And this side would not be very, uh, permanent and it would be based on, what? How many, on driveways, did we say? Like, the, the side with the least amount of driveways?
Yeah, the side where you can get the most amount of on-street parking.
Oh, I got you, so.
So the few.
Parking would be on the side with less driveways.
Right.
Okay, and if they're equal, then it's gonna be up to Phil to decide.
Yes, Phil gets to do it. And I'm fine with reducing the three-inch, the twelve-hour, three-inch to twelve-hour, two-inch
Yeah.
for no-on-street parking in a snow event.
Sure, yeah, okay.
It's a more common accumulation total.
Yeah.
Chicago and region-wide.
Yeah.
Particularly with our neighboring towns.
Okay.
All right. So we're not voting on this, though, you have to.
You got everything you need?
Thanks, Phil.
Thank you.
Okay, any other comments, questions? No? Okay, let's move on. Item E, if you have a motion.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve an ordinance for the levy and assessment of taxes for the fiscal year beginning May first, twenty-twenty-two and ending December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three for the village of East Dundee, Kane and Cook Counties, um, Illinois.
Second.
It, May twenty-two?
It should be twenty-twenty-three.
Yeah, May, May first, twenty-twenty-three?
Correct.
Okay, and ending December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three. Like, wait a minute. Did we get a second?
Second.
Okay, so Brandis, this was, kinda fell into your purview here. I, I had a couple of questions on it, but do you wanna just, wanna just do your thoughts on this? Okay, thank you.
I was waiting, I was waiting for that thing.
Okay. Um, so before, last board meeting, we brought this to you, um, for a discussion, and I believe Erica had conversations with some or most of you about the increase, the potential increase, and we settled on five percent increase in our, over our last year's property tax, um, which brings us to seven hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars, twenty-five thousand, two-hundred-and-forty-one thousand dollars. Um, I guess I'm open for any questions.
Well, the four, the five percent even, I mean, isn't it, are we limited to four-point-nine-nine percent without any having to go to the county for permission at all?
Five percent.
It's, it's anything under five?
Yes.
I'm, I'm wondering, you know, just what everyone's sense is that, um, I'm not suggesting that we made this unduly tough on ourselves, but we did make it a bit aggressive. We're going for twenty-thirty-six to be a hundred percent funded. That's fine, and I'm not, I'm not advocating kicking this can down the road or anything, but I don't know if there's any magic to that. Where if the county, or the state, I'm sorry, has given us to twenty-forty, um, the numbers are, are tough enough to get there. And are we making it tougher on ourselves, basically, by, by going a hundred percent by twenty-thirty-six? If we were to have a focus of a hundred percent by twenty-forty, uh, I'm wondering what those numbers would look like. Lotte Bacharachman says one-point-one mil, if we wanna get there by twenty-thirty-six, we might be at nine-hundred, nine-fifty, somewhere around there if we were to go by twenty-forty. So, I'm just, you know, I mean, if we're talking about going five percent, though, we know, we know we're not gonna get to that. I mean, what we're essentially doing by going five percent is the same thing we did last year, and we're really just.
Last year we raised nothing.
Well, I think we did one-point-something.
One-point-nine.
One, I'm sorry, one, one-twenty-nine percent.
So that is different. It is, but it's not a considerable amount if you take into account the, the shortage that we're facing, is my point. So, um, and I don't think that it's realistic for us to lean on the general fund to make up the difference between what we're gonna be contributing and what we should be according to Lotte Bacharach. So my, my point is, is that, is five percent something that we should reconsider? I mean, nobody likes to pay taxes, but man, I'm telling you, I would rather pay five or ten percent a year increase or 10% a year increase. It's manageable, it's predictable every year until we get to where we go rather than, you know, a 2,000% increase at the end of the line.
Well, I, we brought this up the last time, that we do have a lot of new things on board right now with truck tax and other new revenue streams that we are, that we have as a village. And I don't have any taste for raising more than 5% without knowing those numbers and without having more information about other revenue streams that we could use to support the pension. Because that's what this is. It's, it's on your property tax bill, but it, it is, it goes straight to the police pension. So I, I want to see other things that don't rely solely on our residents and property owners for this bill. Like that's, we, yes, we need to make some progress. Yes, this will contribute. I want to see the other numbers before I make anything, before I put more on our residents.
Well, when do we have to have yay or nay on the 5%?
Today.
Tonight we have to do that.
Unless we want to meet again before December 31st.
No.
Or I'm busy.
Or you.
Which I am excited is going to be a no.
We cannot raise the amount, it would have to be lowered.
Cannot raise the amount.
We would have had to do a hearing.
So, okay, well, that kind of pigeonholes us a little bit in tonight's discussion, so it's just something to consider. I mean, we, we still have time, but, you know, you can, it, we're close enough to the date that we need to be at, and that's a state mandated thing to be able to know whether or not we're going to get there. And I don't think we're gonna, to be honest with you. I don't, I mean, the amount of money that we keep putting in, you know, is, it's inadequate. It just is. And I mean, we have to address it eventually.
Wait a second. The, the, the truth is, we do not have to raise taxes to add more to the police pension fund. We could take it from other items. And that's just the simple truth.
It sure, sure it is. But all those other items then will have to require sacrifices. Scott, there's only so much money to go around.
Right. But the difference, the difference, Jeff, is that it'll require sacrifices by us, the village, rather than sacrifices by the residents. So just, that is the village, so, no, that's not true.
We also have the other revenue streams that, like Sarah said, we don't know how much we're making from, from them. So we can make other choices next year once we get more finite numbers.
No, I, I understand, I understand. I fully agree. And so I'm just throwing that out there just to chew on it. So we, we have some time, but it's, it's coming closer, it seems, so.
That will be extremely helpful when we switch to the calendar year, fiscal year, to be able to make these decisions.
Make it easier.
Together and not separately.
Right.
So it's, it's been difficult to make this determination without having all of the information. So that will be helpful in future years.
Yeah, sorry, I complained about something I know is getting fixed. It's just I don't remember right now.
It's all good. It's all good.
So, okay, were there any other questions, comments? Anybody? Kathy?
Trustee Saviano?
Yes.
Trustee Triver?
Yes.
Trustee Sauter?
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney? What is the ordinance? I know, but what is the raise on the ordinance itself? Because.
5%.
The dollar amount? Yeah. It's seven. And it's 5%? It's 5%.
It's a $34,000 increase over last year.
$34,000 over last year?
Yes.
An average of $20 per household?
60 per commercial for the year.
Yes. Just for the villages portion.
Yes. Trustee Coonsey?
Yes.
And Trustee Britton?
Yes.
Okay, that'll take us to item F, which is a downtown TIF extension update. Erica, I'm going to let you roll with this one.
Yeah, I just wanted to give a verbal update. We met a few months back and approved the contract with the TIF consultant to evaluate options for extending the downtown TIF. As we talked about earlier today, we have the Hager property, which is going to need some substantial village assistance to mitigate hazards that are on the property. And also we have, you know, the lumberyard property and a couple of other spots in the downtown that aren't fully built out yet. So the downtown TIF has approximately nine years left on it and we're hoping to get the 12-year extension from the state. That requires us working with all of our taxing bodies that are affected by the TIF to try to obtain letters of support. So I've been working with those taxing bodies to answer questions and to alleviate concerns and to help them understand that this, this actually is beneficial for all parties and not just beneficial for us. So that process is moving forward. It's a little slow, but it's a complex concept, so it behooves us to take our time and to get everybody's questions answered. So I have another meeting with the school board tomorrow. I have a meeting, going to the Park District Board meeting in January. And I've already received two out of the 10 letters of support, so we're making some progress. And the, the consultant recommended that we just in whole extend the existing downtown TIF because after running the numbers, it's not that much dramatic difference if we were to carve out the individual parcels that we're looking to redevelop and then start new TIFs for those. But if we're not able to obtain all of the letters of support from all the taxing bodies, then we won't get the extension from the state, so we will have to look at that as a Plan B. It's not a, it's not a bad Plan B, it's just a different Plan B. It's still advantageous to us in many ways, so I don't see it as a disappointing outcome. It's just a different road. So as we continue to move forward over the next 60 days, you know, I think we'll have a better understanding of if we're going to be successful with the straight up extension or if we're going to need to go the other road of the individual carve-outs. But we're well positioned to capitalize on the downtown TIFs and to continue to move forward with the progress there. So I'm, I'm pretty optimistic about where we're headed, just to have to understand that there's several roads that we can travel and, and most of them are all good, so.
So when we talk about the timing it's going to take before we get the green light to extend, it could be a year, who knows? Are we limited to a 12-year extension on that? Because that's going to start us at 2021, 22, somewhere around there. Whereas if we started over, it's a start over at 23, can we get a 13-year extension? Or from the time we get the extension, can we start the clock back at 23?
So the clock continues to run and when we obtain the extension, it will be 12 years. That's the maximum that you can obtain. Some of the taxing bodies have asked us if we'd consider requesting a shorter extension, like a 10-year. But the practical reality is by the time we, we, if we're successful in obtaining it and we actually get it, and then, you know, some of these massive projects actually put a shovel in the ground and get on the tax rolls, you're already talking about like pretty, like a pretty shortened timeframe. So, you know, it doesn't make the most sense to go for less than the 12. So that if, if we don't, I would say we should put ourselves on a course to know for sure one way or the other if we're getting it or not. About 90 days, any longer than that, you know, we're probably not going to get there. So I wouldn't want to drag this out for a year, but I would want to give it some more due diligence to try to see if we can get it across the finish line before we decide to go another direction.
Okay, good. All right.
So the timeline for Plan A, the difference in the timeline of Plan A and working through Plan A and understanding if we have to go to Plan B is 90 days. But the difference in the timeline between all of the steps that you need to go through between an extension and between starting over with the new property, the undeveloped properties at this point, and a new TIF, is there a timeline that's substantially different between those two different kind of options?
Yes, in, in some ways, yes. Because if we were to go to Plan B and, you know, we would wait, carve out the Hager piece until we actually had development ready to go.
Yeah.
And then we would, you know, start the clock as soon as, to close to construction as possible, so you could get the full 23 years out of that. And that's kind of what I've been trying to explain to the taxing bodies is, you know, if we're not successful with the extension, we can go this other road, which actually sort of benefits us more. But we're trying to be partners here and we're trying to, you know, make this good for everybody. But certainly there's, in some cases, going to be greater value in, you know, resetting some areas of the TIF than just doing one collective. But from a management perspective, it's also more, more work to manage yet another TIF and to create it costs a little more money than to just extend.
Sure.
So there's a balance there.
Okay, that's helpful, I understand.
Yeah, that's, you know, what I'm trying to help everybody understand is there's certain advantages to each one and there's, you know, the most benefit to the most amount of people is to go with the first option suggested, but if everybody's not able to see the wisdom in that, we have other options.
Okay, sounds good.
Yes, no? Okay. Then that'll take us to item G, if we could have a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve a resolution accepting public improvements related to the 855 East Main Street Apartments Development.
Second.
You did a second?
Yeah, I second.
This, this was basically just reducing the bond that they're holding, that they're being required to hold, Joe, is there punchless long or is it up to date? It is, completely.
It's closing it out.
You're also accepting some of the improvements, the water main improvements that were installed as part of the project.
Right.
And all of the transport tunnel.
It does. Yeah. So anybody have any questions on this one? I mean, is there any? This is kind of almost just housework. Essentially, they've got a bond out there, they've finished all what they've had to, so we're going to reduce that. No questions? Kathy?
Trustee Saviano?
Yes.
Trustee Triver?
Yes.
Trustee Sauter?
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Coonsey?
Yes.
And Trustee Britton?
Yes.
Okay, that takes us to our financial reports. Kelly, did you suggest that this one was a voting item?
Yes, sir.
That we should in the future be?
Yes.
Going around the room and vote on them?
Correct.
Okay, so is this a motion that would need to be made then?
Yes, sir.
It is. We have a motion to accept the warrants list then.
I'll make a motion to accept the warrants list of $280,161. Second.
Kathy?
Trustee Saviano?
Yes.
Trustee Triver?
Yes.
Trustee Sauter?
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Coonsey?
Yes.
And Trustee Britton?
Yes.
Sorry, I didn't ask if anybody had any questions concerning the warrants list, but as always, they can go to Brandis and Erica on that, so. All right. So we'll go to those reports. Start out with Andy.
Uh, no reports.
Rich?
So the St. Patrick's Day Parade Committee has begun meeting again. And so the parade is usually the Saturday before St. Patrick's Day, so March 11th is our parade. And if fireworks do happen, we're looking at, it's usually the Friday after, it's March 17th on St. Patrick's Day.
Oh, my God.
So that's if they do end up happening because we don't fund them, so we have this soon. So, but I just want to give those dates so it's known and some people had issues before with it being on two weekends, but our justification is we get two weekends of extra business in our town for all our, our businesses and restaurants. And so that is why we split it into two destinations, two weekends in a row. So that's it.
Rich?
No report.
Scott?
Uh, no report.
Kathleen?
Oh, you know what? Actually, I just wanted to say, I think go to the PodCon meeting and there's no updates there of note.
Okay. Really no report. I was wondering about that. Last week we did have a general village committee, uh, committee meeting and the subject was the depot usage and the potential for putting out an RFP for either staffing or putting together a vision of what we want for that board. Since that has happened, I've also, I also understand that the Township Visitors Board, which was running the Saturday markets from Mother's Day in May to the end of October, has disbanded as, as an organization. So there is going to be even more of a need to put an RFP out there to see what, what other, other organizations would want to use the depot. It's, again, it's open to any group or business group that would put on a community event that would be free to the public and, and open to the public. There is a minimal rental fee that is charged based on whether or not you are a 5031(c) charity foundation or nonprofit foundation or a for-profit business. Franco is, I believe, in charge of all of that. But we've done more and more with marketing that as, as a potential usage for the community at large and look forward to trying to get an RFP out so that we can get some of the best ideas on the table for the usage of, of that kind. It's a, it's a really nice asset, not just the park, but the building itself. So there were some ideas that we can put forth in the RFP just as idea starters, but really would be interested in learning what other people would have in mind on that. So hoping to get that out by the, sometime in January so that we can have some of the other people putting together some ideas and have some, start to flesh out some ideas of what we're going to be doing, what, what is going to, what's next summer during the day is going to look like in that area. So if there, if other people have other ideas, I can forward the notes that Annie put together that kind of summarize and start talking it to other people that you know that might have some great ideas of what to do with that area. And we can go from there. Also, based on the, the presentation that we had from the Elgin Mall last week, I did go to the Elgin Mall and was very, very interested and I encourage everybody here to go and visit if you haven't done so already. There are definitely some needed improvements, which I think they have envisioned. However, they are completely, I ran into them when I was there and they are completely open to any and all suggestions to make it the most, best and most successful use if it were to get approved. One of the things that I did find very surprising was the number and the breadth of different types of businesses in there. There's four barber shops, there's two different types of jewelers and watchmakers that are in there that do silversmithing. There, the two restaurants, there's high-end kitchen appliance. The, it's complementary to what we have down here on River Street, not necessarily competing with what we have there, as well as some pretty cool high-end western wear stores and other, other things like that. So they, I'm encouraging them to put together some visuals and context and can, I'm available to talk and I, I know Scott has been there as well and, and has some input or ideas, but I want to make sure that we give them some standards. You, you did go too? You give them, we give them some standards of what our expectations would, would be if for, for to meet approval if we were to get that, to that point. And that's all I had.
Sarah?
No report.
All right. Kelly?
No report.
Wow. Chief? Chris?
No report.
Joe? Phil?
Sorry, I have a smaller floor. National Weather Service has issued a winter storm watch, which will likely become a winter storm warning Thursday and Friday. Blizzard-like conditions, wind speeds of 50 miles an hour. I'm unsure at this point how many inches of snow we'll get, but.
Yeah.
Starting Thursday evening, probably wrapping up sometime later Friday night. Sorry, I did not put this in. sometime later Friday night. Sorry to knock you in the ear, but.
Thanks for the.
The National Weather Service sent a little word here.
That'd be great. That'd be great, thank you.
Great.
Okay, I just got a small one. I participated in the Shot With Cop program. We had a really, really good turnout. Chief Gruger was there along with eight different law enforcement communities. And well over a hundred kids took part. And so it was a really well-run and well-attended event. Oh, just to let some of our business community know, I also sat in on a, Metro West Council Governments had their, a breakfast meeting that had speakers from the DCEO, the Department of Community Economic Opportunity. So if there's anybody who would like any information on grant money that would be available for certain types of businesses, don't hesitate and get ahold of me and I'll help you get in touch with the right people. So, and that's all I've got. Now, who's Erica?
No report.
No report. There you go, okay. Takes us then to executive session, which I believe we're going to go into briefly. So we'll adjourn. If I could have that written in or read into.
What are we adjourning for?
Uh, this would be C two collective negotiating matters.
And discussion in a.
C twenty-one.
C twenty-one.
Discussion of minutes. C eleven pending litigation and C one personnel.
Of personnel, okay.
Um, I will move to adjourn this meeting going into executive session, close to the public and media under the provisions of the Illinois Open Meetings Act, five ILCS, one-twenty slash two. C twenty-one, discussion of minutes. C eleven, pending litigation. And C one, personnel and legal counsel. We will be adjourning from that meeting, not coming back to public session.
Second.
Trustee Saviano?
Yes.
Trustee Triber?
Yes.
Trustee Soder?
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Coonsey?
Yes.
Trustee Britton?
Yes.
And President Lina?
Yes. Well, thank you all for coming.
Can we take five?
Appreciate it. See you next year.
Always. Take five, yes.
Smoke, make it out of.